All right, let's move forward and take up our 7.3 item, consideration of suspension of the CPI tax rate increase for cannabis taxes. Carol?
And thank you again, Madam Chair. Patrick Sullivan is also going to introduce this item.
Good morning. So this continues all the same issues that were discussed before. The county, just to provide background again, has two different tax rates applicable to the cannabis industry. We have our cannabis cultivation tax and the cannabis business tax. Each of these taxes has built into the ordinance an automatic CPI increase that occurs each year. As we said, generally in most counties, the primary burden facing cannabis cultivators stems from the state cultivation tax. That's still the larger burden on them. When we were comparing square footage, other counties do typically have higher cultivation tax rates than Lake, at least when you're looking at square footage taxes. It's hard to compare us when some counties use a gross receipts tax on their cultivation, and that's not as easy to compare directly. We note Sonoma County recently had a presentation with their Board of Supervisors that demonstrated the cultivation tax at the local level was representing approximately 21% of their tax burden for cultivators. In Lake County, when we applied that same methodology, it looks like about 14%. So one of the steps that we, that staff was recommending that could be considered is to suspend that CPI increase that is slated to automatically occur. Right now, in the next billing, we would be applying that inflation-based increase to the tax rate. It would span across all of the different tax types applicable to the cannabis industry here. One of the recommendations is consider suspending that for two years. This is a step that the board could take, at least initially, to lower that burden going forward on cultivators, provide some sense of certainty, would also allow additional time to find out what reform the state is actually going to implement. We have come to learn in the last few weeks that the legislature and governor's office both have expressed a strong desire to reform tax on the state level. Also, in the meantime, that could allow your board to consider other options at the local level, including a potential extension of deadlines or penalty relief, which where some people have brought up in earlier comments. For instance, it could extend to May 15th, to payments are due on the second installment at the end of this month. The board could ultimately consider extending that out to a later date, and if that date was met, that 25% penalty could be considered waived. These are some of the other ideas that are out there, but in the short term, if your board chooses to, you could direct staff to waive this CPI increase or take the necessary steps to do so. And then, at least on this next round of billing that will come out, it's not going to be higher, already higher after the state has already increased its taxes. So this was an initial step that staff brought to your board to consider, and staff is available for further questions.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on this, 7.3. I'm going to ask Anita a question. So we are just at this point talking about the CPI tax rate increase. There's nothing else we can talk about on this, about extending taxes or eliminating taxes. We're just talking about the CPI, correct?
The only thing you could do in regard to any of those other items would be to direct staff to bring it back with a proposal, but no, this is a very narrow item for your board's consideration today. And even as to, even as to this item, your board can certainly make your intended decision, but I'd suggest you might want staff to bring it back the very next week with something in writing, so it's very clear what you're agreeing to, just to avoid any confusion by anyone moving forward.
Supervisor Sabate?
Well, I was planning to offer suggestions where the CPI tax rate is, I think giving direction to staff of which direction to go should be broader than just a discussion of the CPI tax rate. And I want to make sure I understood that correctly, because that was my plan with today's conversation, is that we can have the consensus of what to provide to staff to come back for us next week. Am I correct on this? I'm looking at Ms. Grant through the screen.
If you want staff to come back with additional information as to other possible mechanisms to address the county tax, you can give that direction, but it's not a discussion or consensus building item today. So you can say, come back and look and bring us information on XYZ. You just can't reach a consensus on XYZ today because the item is narrowly crafted.
Well, I think this was then very incorrectly positioned for us to have a good conversation. I wish it would just say discussion on cannabis taxes and direction to go, because just discussing the CPI tax rate increase, even if that is suspended, to me, that is a slap in the face to the farmers that are dealing with dire circumstances right now. So I guess the only option I have is say this has to come back with some much better options than just this, and it needs to come back ASAP for the fact that taxes are being requested as we speak.
Anything further from the supervisors? I definitely agree with that, and I think we have to make sure that, you know, public comment that we're staying on topic. So I honestly think this would be better to bring back with other options, so it's a broader conversation on this topic. Supervisor Simon?
Obviously, each one of us can have something brought back, but today, you know, this was an item here that was brought to us and suggested by staff, and I want to thank you for bringing it. Obviously, it's a very complex items that we're going over, our last item plus this item, but this is something I think, at least on this one item that's here on the agenda today, that I think we could address with this, you know, not having it increased. I think that would be maybe a small step, but it's a step forward from my point of view, and prepared to make a motion once we hear topics or comment on this specific item.
For clarification, so you're saying, without putting words in your mouth, agree or disagree with what's being offered and ask for more discussion to follow with different ideas?
Yeah, and staying within the realms that we have to not expand out. So, but would like to address this item today that's on our agenda.
Anything further from the supervisors before I open up the public comment? Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment in the boardroom. We have to make sure we're staying on topic. We're talking about a suspension of the CPI tax rate increase. So if you'd like to talk, come up to the microphone, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Once again, thank you for being here. My name is Richard Durham. I'm the owner of Lower Lake Organics. Yeah, to consider raising the taxes with inflation at this point is just a joke. And I don't know how this got put in this way, but it's literally a joke. We are on our knees. I'm a realtor. I'm a cannabis consultant. I'm a cannabis farmer. Those three industries are gone right now in Lake County. Every day, somebody's offering me a farm for sale. Every day. I mean, in the beginning, in 2021, in the first four months, I sold over $10 million worth of properties. That's it. My phone hasn't rung since. I talked to the other realtors that sell cannabis farms in this county, zip. Not one phone call. I have properties on 420 properties. I used to get 100 hits every two days. I don't get one hit. So I'm asking you to not consider this, because it's a joke, and to bring it back next week. We really need to come to a resolution. This is urgent. You're going to lose all your small farmers. I'm telling you, nobody has any money. There has been no sales this year, zip. And we're facing doom and gloom. I've laid off my entire staff. It's me and my son. And I'm a lucky one. I made a ton of money last year, and I spent most of it just, you know, finalizing, fixing up the gardens and getting ready to go forward. But there's no forward right now, and especially with what we're looking at, at the, so I suggest that we don't increase the cannabis tax, and we please bring it back next week so we can discuss the cultivation tax. Thank you.
Anything further from the boardroom?
I'm Kristin from Magic Meadow Farms. I would urge you to consider what I have to say about this, about these, this agenda item. Overproduction of cannabis across the country, from Southern Oregon to Oklahoma, where you literally draw a picture to get a use permit. There's enough cannabis on the market right now to literally every buyer just walks right past all your flower, even if it's the best. Lobbyists at the counties, you know, for the counties went to the state and from, and they got, there are these large-scale corporations going. Producer models have no way to sell their product because they don't allow direct sales at the farm. We have to pay upfront on what we may not produce based on mold, disease, pest, failure to thrive. Our industry, like even to buy, you know, clones at an end, because it's so backwards, like if something happens and we sign a producer contract and the fail, the clones all die, we still are, we still have to pay for all the clones and we don't get our money back. Distributors and manufacturers take your product, process and sell at the time of return your product after its expiration date. The product comes back different than it's sent out. There's no enforcement or strategy to get your money, even with the lawyer, demand letters, small claims court, terms contract, and constant calling. The law leaves the distribution companies in charge of the farmer's destiny. The distribution companies aren't paid by the dispensaries because it trickles down. So 90 to 120 days, you're waiting from the dispensary at the distribution level to get paid, to pay the farmer. So then the distribution company takes the money that they, they use to, when they get their, when they get your money for your flower to pay their bills instead of paying you. There's no enforcement. It's not federally legal, like Moke Simon said. So I had countless conversations. There's two, about 180 acres licensed in Cali, in this Lake County area. I want to say that half are not going to plant again. So we have many farms that are going to replant. We have unpaid distributor bills. We have no way to get our, to our end buyers. Like this county could actually turn this around and create buyers, producers guilds that would sell and collect sales tax in the county. Maybe you suspend the cultivation tax and you give the farmer a place to sell their product at a local venue that would support farmers markets and direct sales to their end buyer. I went to the Emerald Cup and was able to sell to my end buyer. It was like Christmas. I have never got to do that before. And people bought my product. It was horrible. It's horrible for the farmer. I'm asking this board to reconsider your thoughts on cannabis as an industry. I'm really disappointed in the last decision, and I don't want to be disappointed again because I'm going to have to leave this county. And I've, I do a lot here for the kids and all the locals, and I'll continue to do so if I'm given the platform to help change these laws. These laws need to be reformed.
You've reached your three minutes. If you could wrap it up?
Sure. I'm going to wrap it up at this. Magic Meadow Farms is a great farm, and all these farmers that came here today really believe in this industry, and we believe in all of you, and we need to fix this today, not next week, today, because we're not going to be here. I'm out. My family, back to the East Coast. See you later.
Okay. Go to the next speaker. And remember, we're talking about suspension of the CPI tax.
I know, very limited. Chris Jennings, I'm a vertical operator. I'm fully vertical. I think our problem is a lot more than taxes, but since we can only talk about taxes, I think adding more money to the tax is going to kill people, much like Richard Durham. I'm going into my personal assets to pay my workers. I personally believe the small farmers are better off than the larger people. I have a lot of mouths to feed, not like children, but like workers that rely on me, that have children or have people that need to, you know, rely on them working every day. And it's about to get to the point, I'm about to lay everyone off, you know, like I own a dispensary, I'm selling the asset. And Moke, you make a comment about the outsiders coming in and taking what we have, and you know, a local person about to buy Lakeside Herbal Solutions. It's about to be like Canopy or Attila Ray or GTI. It's about to be one of the largest companies coming in, buying up all the retail. I'm same position as the young lady before us, like I'm liquidating assets. If I could sell my farm two years ago with the prices I was offered, I wouldn't blink an eye, and I wish I could go right back and do that, knowing where we're at now today. It's, it's not just a tax thing, and I don't, I don't think we're crumbling and crashing. I think we've already crashed and burned, and I think at this point, we need to do everything we can to try to, like, regather up everything that we can to try to like push forward and move forward. And I'd really love to hear the numbers of how many people pay their taxes at the second installment. I know everyone probably paid, I didn't pay my taxes in the summer. I didn't, I don't grow autos. I don't believe in autos. It's not my thing. You know, there's too much BS with the auto flower stuff and like how the quality of product. I feel like a lot of people this summer did pay their taxes on time. It was very minimal, but it'd be really interesting to ask the tax person that's hopefully listening in on this still to be like, how many people actually came back and made their second installment, or how many people are actually really like waiting to try to make some money to pay the second installment, because, I don't know, the numbers aren't there. You're getting offered 350, 400 a pound. I can assure you, on a wholesale list for the dispensaries, the numbers don't reflect. There's not too much weed in Lake County. There's too much weed in the United States. Illegal weeds coming in from Oregon flooding our distributors. It's not all the weed being grown in California. It's the weed being grown outside of California, where they can go buy depths in Oregon on the hemp farms for $200 a pound, throw it in a semi and bring it down here and smuggle it into the distributors, and that's who's, that's where the weed's coming from. It ain't coming from the farmers, because there's too much taxes involved. So I think adding any more taxes on top of this, the chaos that we already have is ludicrous, and it's crazy, and we really should do everything we can at this moment to do all possible to prevent the further, you know, burning of the industry. It's not coming back. You're right, Bruno. Pound prices aren't coming back. Outdoor weed is the new field Mexican brickweed, like, and if you're not growing beautiful depths and greenhouses, you know, like you're not going anywhere. And that's why the conversation needs to go further from taxes. We need the buildings to dry in. We have ag exemptions for power. They lie there. Hopefully, our new ag commissioner, who I know is not totally against cannabis, you know, like maybe she can help you guys work, but it's not just a tax thing where we need taxes reformed. We need a lot of reform in the community. The growers need to be able to, the ability to have self-disaster. They need to be able to do a lot of things. I'm sorry to get off subject, but it's just not, it's not taxes. It's not reform. That's a good starting point. There's just so much more that this, like, the ripple effect of it all is so much more than just that. There's a lot more we can do, and hopefully we can get like immediate things taken care of. I'm not a big fan of ad hoc committees. Spend money to think of a way to spend more money, and a year later, something happens. There's a lot more to it. We just got to be very creative when it comes down to it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the boardroom wishing to speak on the suspension of the CPI tax?
Hi, I'm Tamara Thorne. I'm the owner of Heal Thy Self Gardens. I am a, one of the only regenerative certified cannabis farms in Lake County, and I'm unable to operate because of the taxes and the funds to enter the market. And so I heard a lot about, I'm a little off subject respects, but I heard a lot about the taxes going to take care of illicit grows. The reason there's illicit grows is because it's too expensive to enter the cannabis market. There are small farmers just like me out there, and when you're talking about the illicit growers, like, there's mamas and papas that are just trying to enter the fucking market, sorry.
Watch your language, please.
The market, and we can't. We just can't because it's too expensive. We've almost lost everything, and that's just where it's at. So if there can be like no more cost or like raising any more taxes, that'd be great. Thanks.
Any further public comment from the boardroom?
Hi, Boarder Tyler again. Just wanted to say real quick, kind of back to what the sheriff said on the taxes. There's 0%, and there's 100%, and it's called the Laffer curve. We have to find the sweet spot between 0 and 100. And then, I think, just as a reminder, and I'm sure you're all aware, the ultimate goal of any economic policy is not to maximize government revenue, it's to maximize long-term economic growth. So if we could just kind of try to remember that, it'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from the boardroom? Seeing no movement, I'm going to, oh, go ahead, Mary.
I just.
You can start with your name.
Mary Draper, and I appreciate you wanting to move this forward today, and I think that it's not much help, to say the least, but at least it's starting the process. Really appreciate you guys bringing it back next week, because these people are dying. I don't grow cannabis in Lake County. I'm a distributor, and I have dispensaries, and I have indoor in Sacramento. But I know what my friends are going through, and you're conscientious. I buy from them, and I know the tiny little bit of money that they're getting for their product. And it does, they're not making money. They're losing money. And that's the way it is right now. And you are going to lose them all if you don't do something about it in a big hurry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any further comment from the boardroom?
Hello, Christina Torres with Stella Green Farms. I do certainly appreciate your attention to this matter. It is incredibly urgent. I would just like to express again and echo all of my fellow farmers in industry in the cannabis, is we have already dipped into our absolute savings funds. I am selling my house to continue to go with my passion of my small business and cannabis growth, because I believe in it, and I am doing every single sacrifice in order to continue to sustain. I appreciate your efforts in being conscious and sustaining a community that can develop together. Thank you.
Anything further from the boardroom? Seeing no movement, I will go to Zoom with Jessica Penner. If you could start with your name, and then you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jessica Pender. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am here on behalf of the other women cannabis growers of Lake County, all over this county, because we come from, far and wide. It's a huge county, as everybody knows. We have stayed in Lake County, and being that our county has the most women growers that I know of in most of the counties, we want to stay in Lake County. It's a beautiful county to raise our children, to have our homes, to make our farms. The soil is epic here. Every, the growing conditions are amazing. We have no intention of taking our money out of the community. We have been here raising our families in the community. We have put all of our money back into the community. We have built communities inside the community. We, we urge you guys to really take this onto account and not to raise the taxes on something that we are no longer able to bring money to the community in. We're no longer able to take care of our families. We're no longer able to pay our bills. These taxes are wiping us out. At 45%, and then another 30% goes to our costs of the year, we are not making anything. We can't even pay our house taxes that are reside inside the community. So my, my urge to you is to really think about what you're doing, like Tyler said, to the economy within the community that you're trying to stand for. Also, as, as the wine industry goes, at $15 per acre, we're getting charged $1 per foot, per square foot. And that, that is ridiculous, saying to us the fact that we are like the wine industry. Why can't we be taxed like the wine industry? Do you guys do a, how, how many times do you raise the CPI taxes on the wine industry? This, I think, needs to be addressed more. I would like to stay in this county. I am the part owner and cultivator at Ghost Dance Ranch, and I have no intention of moving my business, neither do my partners, but we will be forced to if this is not considered and addressed a little bit sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to Patty. If you could start with your name, and you have three minutes. We're talking about the CPI suspension.
Hey there. Thank you again for giving us the opportunity to address the board on this matter. You know, I just want to echo a little bit of what, what Richard Durham, you know, had to say, and I think what Chris Jennings had to say, just, I don't know how many other farms were, have been able to, to pay their second installment of the cultivation tax that's assessed by the county. I know I personally am not able to. I haven't sold anything this year, and I had to borrow money from my mother in order to pay our first installment. My mother's on a fixed income. She gave me money out of her personal savings, and it broke her. Now my mom has no personal savings because I needed to pay my cultivation tax to the county. I want to address something that came up, and I want to just gently, very gently remind everyone that cannabis is not wine. Cannabis is not something that is utilized to intoxicate people. It can be used that way, as can cough syrup, but it is a medicine, and that is the premise under which we are even here today. That is the premise under which I started cultivating cannabis, because I have ulcerative colitis. Without this plant, I would be suffering immensely, and so would so many other people. To tax it at this high rate, when it is not any, it is, it is a medicine. That is why it is here before us today. That is the premise under which it even arrived at legality, is on the backs of people dying of cancer and HIV. And we're sitting here discussing it like it's booze. It is not booze. It helps people get off of booze. It helps people get off of narcotics. I can't believe that we are comparing this plant to wine or beer. Please, please, consider reducing, assessing, reforming, all of the legislation that Proposition 64 dropped in our county's lap, in the every county's lap. It was a poorly written piece of legislation that we have really worked it beautifully. Lake County, my goodness, the Board of Supervisors here, you guys have been tireless in your efforts to make this piece of legislation work for our community, and it has been, but right now, it is suffering. And the only thing that Lake County has to cling to economically right now is cannabis. Don't crush this opportunity for our beautiful community. This is all we have now. Buyers have destroyed us.
Okay, you've reached your three minutes. We're going to go to the next person. Michael?
Great, thank you again. Supervisor is Michael Colbruno. I actually operate Ghost Dance Ranch, and I'll speak directly to the CPI issue, but I first want to say that in a prior duration of my life, I was a chief of staff at Board of Supervisors in San Francisco and chief of staff at the California State Legislature. And I just got to take issue with the fact that it's got to be limited only to this CPI increase, because it has to be a broader conversation to even talk about that, because what's going to happen on the 31st, this just cannot be delayed, because people cannot pay their taxes. We can't pay our taxes. We don't know a single person who can pay their next installment of their taxes, and you're assessing penalties on top of that. And I want to just give you a sense of what you're losing if you don't address this. I'm of indigenous, I, I come from indigenous people, and I want to talk about what Mia Bonta, the Attorney General's wife, said at the steps of the Capitol the other day about taxes, because this is a social equity issue, and I hear this Board of Supervisors talk about social equity all the time. But what Mia Bonta said, that the people that you're preventing from getting in this business are people of color and women. And when you look at Lake County, and I'm so glad Jessica Pender spoke before me, the cannabis industry in this county is primarily women. Everybody in our operation, other than the two owners, are women. Our cultivators are women. Our attorneys are women. Our accountants are women. Our distributors are women. Our GA consultants are women. Our metric manager is women. This is here you're harming by these taxes. So it's very relevant to the CPI increase, because when you're increasing it, people already can't pay, and you're making it more onerous for people to get into that market. And this is why it's being driven. You're doing one of two things by not addressing this today, and I'm saying beyond the CPI increase, you have to address the system. And I'm saying beyond the CPI increase, you have to address the suspension of this, of this tax issue because you're going to do one of two things. You're hearing it already, you're driving people out of business. People are selling their homes. People like us are paying employees out of our own personal savings. You hear other people tell that story, or you're moving people into the illicit market. And what I'm hearing from every supervisor is that's what you want to prevent. So you need to, A, today, stop this CPI increase from happening and B, I would go to county council because I'm telling you as a former Chief of Staff, I believe it's germane. It is germane to the entire discussion and you need to suspend the tax. Or what you're going to see by the time you bring this back, more farms out of business, more people distressed, more people losing their homes, more people taking their families out of this county and out of this state. So I think the conversation needs to be broader and I would encourage you to speak, to have county council speak to this issue because it's absolutely germane. And what you lose, if you lose this industry, and I know Nara Dalbaka addressed it on the previous item, is you're going to lose environmental view.
You've reached your three minutes, if you could wrap up your comment.
And you're going to lose community benefits and revenue. Thank you.
We'll move to Sam De La Paz.
I'd like to respond to that before we continue with public comment. The Brown Act tells us that we need to prepare the public as well as the Board of Supervisors for what discussions will be have. It's just, it's the same as public comment, just because it is a conversation we should have, it has not been prepared 72 hours in advance so that everyone can be ready to have this conversation. That's why it's important that when we put an item on the agenda, that it allows for discussion on the topic of what is being impacted by the greater discussion. It could be in the details that we wanted the CPI decrease or increase to be discussed, but the fact that it's simply about CPI, I, I wish we would have not done so because that is not the discussion we should be having at this moment in time. But it prohibits us from having that discussion because nobody has come prepared to discuss the entirety of it based on the fact that the agenda details those things.
Okay, Sam, you have three minutes. If you could start with your name.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, my name is Sam De La Paz. I spoke on the previous item, Vice President of the Hassel Farmers Grange and Sales and Marketing Manager at 421 Group Cannabis Consultancy Based Here in California. And, you know, when it comes to the, the issue of local taxes, again, you know, we need as much reform as we can get and we need to really work together to, to accomplish that. I would like to support mainly LCCAs asks for a minimum of 180-day extension of tax deadlines so that the county can take action on its tax requirements. And we just did that here in Sonoma County as well and we need to see that implemented in every county across the board to just put a pause and then have a further, more robust discussion as the previous speaker or, or Board of Supervisors representative just mentioned. I believe that it does evolve, involve a more robust discussion and it involves more robust stakeholder engagement. Again, we are going to see these businesses dwindle. We are going to not have funds, you know, for any battling of the illicit market and you shouldn't be putting funds and efforts toward battling the illicit market when you don't, when we don't have viable pathways to legalization and to legitimate operation. That's a problem. That is prohibition and taxation without representation. When a provisional licensee is not, has not been granted an annual permit, they have no constitutional rights in a court of law. That is a major, major problem and that is devastating. Again, this, this, this tax issue is devastating to livelihood, to generational land, to savings and family, you know, family models. It, it can be very disruptive. I've seen families split up and I've, I've heard of people in Northern California committing suicide over, over the current state of the industry. So we need to work closely together. I just want to advocate for that and, and, you know, again, echo the comments left by LCAA to move the tax to even canopy only, that's not working in Sonoma County. I would say a gross receipts tax or net receipts or net income. Something like that is a better model. But yeah, I think I'll leave my comments there and just show my support, you know, mostly for LCCA's submitted comment letter. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Erin McCormick. If you could start with your name, you have three minutes. We're talking about suspension of CPI.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
Yes.
All right, Erin McCarrick in Clearlake. Thank you for Chair Randall and Sitting In Chair Scott for this conversation. I'll keep it very short and brief. I definitely support the suspension of CPI. This is one step in the relief and reform of tax in the county and a necessary conversation. I have absolutely been an advocate of taxes for this county since the beginning of commercial cannabis, advocating for increase in money to the sheriffs and money to the CDD. But it's pretty simple. If there is not this relief and reform urgently, there will be no tax base, there'll be no cannabis tax base in the county. It's, you've heard all the stories, no need to go into that again, but it's, you'll go from, you know, 13 million or 9 million of revenue to a million. So there wouldn't even be a tax base for all the stuff that is, all the beneficial things that are coming back. That's it, thanks again.
Thank you. We'll go to Crystal Thomas. If you could start with your name, you have three minutes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Crystal Thomas. Thank you so much for allowing us to have this platform to speak again. And I would just like to say that as a mother who has to provide and in a market where you're talking about increasing the tax on something we can't even already pay the current taxes on, it's very scary to be in this position, to be faced with no income for all of our blood, sweat and tears this year. And the increase in taxes, the inflation in the market, everything has come together to provide us with the lowest market and to leave us in this position that we simply beg of you to consider no raising this tax and other reform in multiple areas of the taxes. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Nikki.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yes, you have three minutes. Go ahead and start with your name.
Hi, hello, my name is Nikki Carboni and I have been an employee in the cannabis industry for over a decade. I've lived here in Lake County for 13 years and I absolutely love where I live and would hate to have to leave. But this tax, I have watched employers let me go along with the rest of their staffs. We have, are among many people who have become unemployed in an area that we never thought we would lack employment. We worked with a great friend of ours for many years, five years, and this past year he suffered a heart attack in his garden at the age of 36. This is how serious of an issue these taxes have become. Without any help, I seriously fear for not only cultivators in the industry, but employees. We simply cannot pay our bills. We cannot pay rent in this lovely county. We don't want to have to leave. We don't want to have to get welfare. We want to be productive members of this society, but in this industry it has become impossible. If we cannot work for a living, we cannot live. And I do have a family that I need to provide for. Many other people have families they need to provide for. My unfortunate friend who passed away had a lovely family that he was providing for. But I think this stress of not being able to do that in this industry led to his untimely death. And I am begging you, along with all of these other wonderful growers in this county, wonderful people, to please consider the elimination of this tax. The, the increase in the tax is a joke and it's only adding insult to injury for these people who are already struggling way above their heads and they are drowning. I'm sorry if I'm not super professional, but I am facing unemployment. Currently I work in Mendocino County and I would love to bring my work back to Lake County, but without any help, these farmers are just shutting their doors one after the other. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We'll go to Nara.
Hi there, Nara Dalbaka, District One. Yeah, so definitely the absolute least that the, that county can do is, is stop the increase in the taxes and that, since that's all that's agendized, yes, please move on that. This would not be agendized like this if cannabis industry had been listened to or responded to properly. I don't know that there's another industry that puts as much money into the county that gets as little response from the county. We've been reaching out for months to try to get meetings to discuss this impending collapse, the existing, the existing collapse, and we have not heard back. I've worked in, with multiple cities and counties and jurisdictions on developing and updating their ordinances as, again, we are all learning how to implement cannabis legalization in California and we're learning together. And the people you're hearing today who are brokenhearted and incredibly passionate, they're like this because they've had no access to speak to their elected officials. We've, we've had so little response back when we're just trying to educate about some of these fantastic farms and farmers and, and the hardships that they're facing right now. So, you know, I know that, that people are impassioned right now and that's, that, you're hearing that and that's, again, because it's been, it's been pretty hard to get a response. I've been involved in stakeholder processes. They come to the people who are permitted in the county and they say, hey, we're updating our ordinance. We want to talk about this at the, we want to, we want to make this a better partnership for all of us together. We want to update some things and let's reach out and let's talk and let's update this ordinance together. And that's not what we're seeing here. You have a huge, huge cannabis cultivation industry here in California and the county is open five days a week now because of cannabis money, right? There's, and what I can tell you is that this collapse is, and I, I think asking for some dollars last year versus this year, or the two-year decrease, you're going to see something because the governors, in the governor's budget, the last line of the governor's budget around cannabis this year reflects an over $30 million decrease in the buckets of money that go to that enforcement, that environmental stuff. That, that is a reflected decrease because that is the market collapsing. That was budgeted over 30 and now that money's gone. And I think you're going to see that in Lake County too, and that's because you're not listening to us. And, and again, you're hearing, we all love this county. We, most of us love and support all, all of you all and, and the, and the, all of the other work that you're doing and, and the leadership that you're showing in this, in this gorgeous county.
You've reached your three minutes, if you could wrap up your comment.
Absolutely. We are, we just want to be part of the conversation.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next person, Sarah.
Hi, thank you. Sarah Bodnar, Policy Advisor to the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. And unequivocally, yes, to suspending the CPI increase, absolutely, and it's so not enough. And thank you Supervisor Sabatier for saying that right from the onset. And I think we need to ask, why are we having such a narrow conversation when we're facing a tax deadline of next week that we know cultivators cannot pay? Why are we not having a more broad discussion? Why is this coming up in the final hour? We need to look at immediate action and figure out a better mechanism for moving forward. The request is to extend that deadline, that January 31st deadline for county taxes by a minimum of 180 days so we can have the discussion we need to have. I hope you will bring that back without delay. Secondly, we need to have a much bigger discussion about tax reform locally. And that discussion should include every single available option, including changing the way we tax square footage, like every other county that uses a square footage tax and align with state law to only tax canopy, or to move to a gross receipts tax. So when you bring back the next agenda item, please make sure that we don't repeat today's process, that we're having such a narrow conversation that we can't even have a conversation and ensure that we can work with you to explore every available possibility. And I would also suggest consideration of forming a cannabis tax ad hoc. I know ad hocs can take a lot of time, but it seems like this is so imperative that we need some focused energy and we definitely need a public process on it to make sure that we don't keep having meetings like this in the final hour every time taxes are due. Thank you so much for your time and we hope your immediate attention.
Thank you. We'll go to Julia. If you could start with your name, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Julia Jacobson. Thank you Supervisors for considering not only suspending the increase of the CPI, but for also bringing this conversation back week, back next week. I want to first of, of course, say that I am fully supportive of the suspension of the CPI. I am also, as somebody said earlier, an advocate for taxes and for taxes being used to help continue to shrink the illicit market. But right now, as you're hearing from all of us today, we are on the brink of the end. This is the end and not, not just next week, right now. The tax is due before next week. I am the owner and founder of Astro Farms. We were one of the first licenses in Lake County. The county asked us to redact our license, our, our application and used it as the example for anybody who wanted to apply for a license in Lake County. People are talking today about how they were unable to sell product on the market and that is a true representation of where our industry is today. But I want to give you another example of a business that did sell product this year. We did have sales every month for the year of 2021, but between the increased taxes, the falling prices and retailers not paying, even if you are an example of success in this industry, you are failing. Because of the state of the California industry, investors are gone. There isn't anyone to back us up anymore when our margins are in the red and we have no choice but to pay the tax or potentially lose our license. Two weeks ago, I contacted the Tax Department to see if there were options for extensions, for payment plans, for partial payment even, with the penalty only falling on the unpaid portion. But the response was that there is nothing in the ordinance allowing for anything other than full payment on time. And that needs to be addressed, not next week, but somehow earlier than that because the tax is due Sunday. We had to reduce our entire employee base by 50% in order to pay this tax. And every day, we are on the brink of full layoffs across the entire company. These are your constituents who are going on unemployment. Please, please vote today to not increase the CPI and please consider addressing the tax before it is actually due. It is due on Sunday.
Okay, you've reached your three minutes, if you could wrap it up. Yes, Anita?
I'm sorry to interrupt public comment, but, and perhaps Patrick Sullivan who's on can speak to this, but I thought the, the tax ordinance made a statement, the taxes are collected as any other county taxes. If that's correct, I'm not clear on why there couldn't be payment plans.
So there's nothing in the ordinance specifically addressing of payment plans and I think that's where the tax collector's coming from on that, so.
But I'm sorry if I may, does the ordinance actually say taxes may be collected in the manner of any other taxes or in the manner of property taxes?
There, there is language in there that says in the same manner as, I believe it's all other county taxes. Let me pull that up.
And from what I understand though, even if you do, for example, property taxes, do a payment plan, you still have, prohibit. do a payment plan, you still have, prohibits you from getting onto the tax auction if you're defaulted, but it doesn't prohibit the penalties.
So, and I think that was the major concern that was expressed by some of the people that contacted the tax collector, if I believe, was that, how to avoid that penalty, that if there was some kind of commitment made, if there was a way to dodge that penalty. And they were getting at that in the ordinance, there's nothing that gives any authority to remove that penalty.
May I ask one more question? And the penalty is due for property taxes if you're paying on a payment plan?
Penalty, so for property tax...
There are penalties for property taxes?
There are penalties for property tax, and then there's the initial penalty for having failed to pay on time, and then there's a monthly penalty assessment, like an interest amount, one and a half percent. So property tax is different. There's the initial penalty, and then there's a monthly penalty. The cannabis tax does not have a monthly penalty. The entire penalty is assessed when it is late. That's something unusual about our ordinance, I believe.
Okay. It would seem, though, at least Madam Chair and the board, that as far as a payment plan, and I haven't had time now to look at the issue of penalties, but at least if taxes are collected in the same manner of other taxes, I would think it arguable, at least, that a payment plan would be implicit among those options.
I could speak to the Treasury Tax Collector's Office about that. I mean, if you believe we could move forward with payment plans based off that language, but, just to be clear, that's still not addressing the penalties that if someone was in a payment plan, that would lead to waive their penalty.
I'm going to interrupt Madam Chair, if you don't mind. I was thinking through how we can go about, I don't want to expand this conversation, but I do want to help something. So I spoke with Ms. Grant real quick. I'd like to put a motion on the table to add an extra item to discuss the postponement of the 25% fine until this conversation is over, because Sunday is the day, therefore, before the next posting of the agenda, there will be action taken to add a 25% fine to taxes not paid. I thought, wrongfully, that this was going to be a broader conversation about local taxes. I'm very saddened to see that it is such a narrow conversation, because it needs to be a broad conversation. And I think that today, there was hope that there would be some sort of light at the end of the tunnel. So I'd like to offer the motion for the extra item due to the need to have action taken before the next posting of the agenda. And all I'm asking for is an extension, a postponement of the 25% assessed penalties until we finalize this conversation, which will come back next week on Tuesday.
Okay, Anita?
First, you have to take it up to determine if it qualifies.
Yes.
Your board is next.
So the motion is on the table for the extra item.
Motion's on the table.
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we need to open up to public comment, or how to, yes, so I'm going to open this up to public comment, but the comment can only be if this meets the requirements to take this up as an extra item, not the item itself.
Narrow.
Narrow. So I know I have hands already up in the Zoom room, so if you could lower your hands unless you want to speak on the fact that, of the requirements to take this item up before our next posting agenda, not the item itself. Is there anybody wanting to speak on that? And I see Jennifer's hand's still up, so I'm going to call on Jennifer.
We're talking on the new proposed additional item, right?
Yes, but not the item itself, just if it should be...
Correct. Okay, so Jennifer Smith, Lake County Cannabis Alliance President, yes, indeed, we would support this additional item being added to the agenda today to talk about.
Okay.
Thanks.
And then Patty. If you could state your name, you have three minutes, but we're just talking about the legalities of having this item put on before the next posting of agenda, not the item itself.
Okay, Patty Lanier again from Noble Gardens. Thank you so much, Bruno. Thank you so much, Patrick, for calling attention to those details that are so very important. Thank you, Anita, for bringing that question up about whether or not we are able to make installment payments. Absolutely, please put this on the agenda to please stop the penalty action today so that we can continue this conversation and so we can continue to have a more broad scope conversation about cannabis policy in Lake County, so that we can save our county's economic future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Johanna, if you could please call roll.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to go back to our original item. So I was still going through the Zoom room, so if there's any hands that want to talk about the suspension of the CPI, that is the discussion that we are having right now. I know I had a couple hands up. We'll go back to Jennifer. We're talking about suspension of the CPI.
Jennifer Smith. I'm going to state the obvious when I say we're in support of suppressing the CPI increase. And while I understand this is the only thing that we are able to speak to now at this moment, again, this flat tax is regressive and punitive. However, I hope that you're hearing, and it sounds like you are hearing, people like Chris Jennings and myself, when we say we need more, we need more reform of local regulation. We've been asking for re-reform. We've been asking for alignment with state policy. We are asking for consistent tax calculations, and we're asking for a seat at the table to have these discussions. I am so encouraged by the conversation that was just had and the fact that we are going to be able to have a broader conversation today, and I hope that we can continue to move this in the right direction. A CPI increase is going to be untenable at this point, but it looks like we're going to have further discussion, and I look forward to chiming in then. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further hands up in the Zoom room, is there anybody in the boardroom that has not spoken on this topic that wishes to speak on the CPI suspension? Seeing none, then I'm going to bring it back to the board for action on this item that we have before us, which is 7.3.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the suspension of CPI tax rate increase for cannabis taxes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Johanna, if you could please call roll.
What, a year, one year, two year, what's your proposal?
Oh. Staff was recommending two.
Two years?
For two years. Thank you for asking for that. Yeah, yeah. I rushed through that one. Yes, two years, thank you.
So I have a motion for two years, still have a second. Johanna, please call roll.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
I totally must have thought up there Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
Sorry, and then Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay. With that, it is now 1:32. Should we take a lunch before we come back with the next item? Okay.
And I just want to remind everybody that the next item is also narrow in the fact that that other discussion is not a necessary discussion to have before the next meeting. It is narrowly about the postponement of the 25% penalties for not having paid the taxes in time. That is the only capable discussion. The rest can be postponed until next week.
Yes. Okay, with that, we will come back in an hour at 2:35. Okay, so it's 2:35, so we're going to go ahead and start our meeting up again, back from lunch, and we're going to start with our extra item, which was a discussion for suspension of the cannabis penalties for cultivation tax. Am I correct with that? Supervisor Sabatier?
If I may, I'm looking for a postponement, not a suspension, so that we can go ahead and have the discussion next week on a much broader scale of what taxation is doing to the industry and what is possible to do on our end to help maybe change some of those things. But today, I'm only looking at the postponement of the 25% fine and penalties that would be incurred if the tax payments would be late. That way, we can go ahead and finish that conversation next week afterwards.
Okay.
Hopefully finish that conversation next week. And that's pretty much it. I'm just looking for a postponement of the 25%, which would be direction to staff to go ahead and do so, and then afterwards, we will continue our discussion on the grander conversation of taxes and cannabis next week.
And Anita, is it as simple as that, as a discussion and a motion to do that, or is there something more we have to do to make sure that we...
I think that I understand what Supervisor Sabatier's saying about a postponement. It's essentially, you can call it a postponement, a deferral of incurring that penalty until the board has a chance to consider its options next week. So it's a short term. You want to make that clear, that it would just be from this Tuesday to next, so that people don't have a false sense of security, because until your board considers a new item next week, you won't know what action you may decide to take, if any.
May I change that semantic a little bit to say that the postponement is until the conversation is over, just in case, because if we don't, it's just a discussion, we will not have a final approval for a resolution or anything like that next week. So I want the postponement to at least last until the conversation and the solution that we either decide, or decide that there is no solution, that there actually is a conclusion to that discussion.
I would defer to Anita.
Anita?
I think you can do that, but I would set, but in no event will it be later than, just because what's concluded, and those types of words can be troublesome when you're trying to figure out what they mean later. So I think that that's a, you can do it as Supervisor Sabatier said, but in no event shall it be later than, and you can put it out to whatever date you want. It doesn't have to be anything near...
That's what I'd be comfortable with, coming up with a date with a longer timeframe on that.
And I'd like to say maybe February 8th, that way that gives us next week for the discussion and the following week to maybe look at the action.
And then Carol?
And so on the part of staff, I want to get more clarification as to the breadth of the discussion you want to have. I think that's important so we can be ready. Today's discussion around the CPI, suspending the CPI temporarily was purposeful in its limits. That's what we brought to you today. But we also suggested in our opening remarks that you could look at other things, and it was suggested that you might want to consider an extension of the tax payments so that, and also a waiver of the penalty, the 25% penalty until some date in the future. That is a relatively easy discussion to have next Tuesday, if you want to have it. If you're wanting something along the lines of payment programs, staff would probably need more time to flesh that out. We'd need to have discussions with the Treasury Tax Collector about how that would work from their purview or their point of view. We would also need to work with community development. Those two offices would need to communicate on some level so that we're sure that there's a way to measure that cultivators are in compliance with their payment plans and thus eligible to grow in the next cycle and so on and so forth. So there are some things that would need to be fleshed out that I don't think could be fleshed out in a week. Some of the other things we've heard suggested in the discussion today are things that I believe would need to go back to the ballot and be considered by the voters.
Okay, so...
If you have more in mind, we'd love to know so we can be ready for you.
I just add specific to the date of the suspension, because it is very complicated. Like you said, it's going to take five years to figure this out, and as said by CEO, some of the stuff will have to go back to vote out of the purvey. So appreciate what's come to us to this point and what is in our control to look at. So agree with the moving the deadline on the 25% penalty, but I really think it needs to be 30 or 60 days. I just, I don't want to look at it unrealistic, and I'm sorry to say that, but I just...
So staff's recommendation, if we were making one today on the payment extension would be, and foregoing any penalty, would be to May 15th. So you could consider that date for the action you want to take under this extra item, and then it could dovetail with policy you may want to adopt further next week.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'd like to have the conversation as quickly as possible, and I understand that there's some complexities to parts of the conversation, and I don't think that we should be having any conversation at this moment about any potential tax measure changes, because that's a very long conversation. So I would like to see if it's possible to do a 30-day deferral and then coming back if we need to extend that deferral if we're not completed with that conversation in order to try to figure out what to do right here, right now.
Supervisor Sabatier?
My only thought was to add on to his need, it doesn't have to, doesn't mean it's going to be that long, that is the drop dead date. So for me, it would be fine to say the May 15 date, but it could fall off any time before that, as long as we're done. So that was, I really think, because we could be back here, instead of going back and forth, we've got other work to do, let's just set that drop dead date, and then if we get it done, we get it done next week, it's done, you know, so we can drop it off. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Supervisor Pyska?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, or, you know, at minimum 60 days. I'm looking at the month of February, and it's a short month, and we have few meetings, so I want to give us a little bit more buffer time if we need it.
And I think we have to make it very clear of what our actions are today. Our actions are, or you're proposing, actions are to reiterate that, so everybody's very clear of what we are doing right now today.
To postpone any potential penalties that the tax measure for cannabis cultivation and cannabis business offers, so that we can have the full discussion on any changes that need to occur prior to having the continuation of the process that we've had in place for two, three, three years, four years.
Could I further clarify, Supervisor? You said postpone the penalties, but I presume you would mean postpone the payments and any associated penalties?
If people don't pay, there's no penalties. If they pay, there's no penalties either. So I figured that if the postponement of the penalties, once we cancel the postponement, then if you haven't paid by then, then you would have a penalty.
Anita?
And that's a distinct point. Payment of the penalties can be deferred, certainly, but that means that they're accrued, and the penalty would just be deferred for a period of time. There's also penalties wouldn't be incurred until, which would be, there wouldn't be any. So there are two different ways to look at it. Payment is different than incurring the penalty.
And I was going with the no penalties incurred until the discussion is over.
Okay. So postpone payment, no penalty incurred.
And what date?
The May...
I'm good with the May 15th. And I will say that the earlier we can finalize this, the better off the next, the people who want to have a season this upcoming year will be in preparation, because by May 15th, they're knee-deep into their season already, and at that point, it'd be nice for them to know what is the status so that they can make the right decision. I also want to add to the conversation of potential changes to the amount of the tax. The tax measure does allow a decrease of the tax, but does not allow an increase of the tax. That was a specific section in the tax measure that was provided. And so if we can have that part of the discussion as well.
But not today?
No, definitely not today.
Not today. I'm just trying to make it very clear for public comment of what we're talking about right now.
Can I just ask a question, Ms. Grant?
Yes, Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and this may be a next week discussion as well, but are we enabling precedence for other tax issues to be brought forward and asked to be postponed? Or is this covered under some other, some other way? I just want to make sure.
Well, that's a very good question, because nothing happens in a vacuum, as I'm sure you know, Supervisor, you wouldn't have asked the question. In this case, this is a local tax. Now, obviously, you couldn't do any of this with regard to a state or federal tax, because you simply don't have the authority. But with regard to local taxes, and certainly, there's always that possibility.
Just ensuring, because just in case a citizen wants to come forward about another specific tax and then use this as a justification to ask for some sort of forbearance or, you know, something along those lines, and using this as a precedent.
know, something along those lines, and using this as a precedent. So I just wanted to make sure it was said.
Okay, and Supervisor Sabatier.
And I just want to add that I've asked for something similar before in the past for fire victims, or fire survivors, to see if we can postpone property tax because of the, typically our fires unfortunately hit right when property tax bills go out, and I always have tried through at least two separate fires in, in my jurisdiction to try and postpone those bills to go out in order to not put salt on the wounds of those who have lost a home to see that they're paying a full tax payment. So it wouldn't be my first time requesting it, and I think that it's, as long as the payment is eventually done and there's a really good emergent reason for why the request is there, I think that it's within our purview.
Also, the, I remember there's something that came forward last year in regards to the public, I think it was the sewer or something like that. We, we were going to ask for some sort of delay or something like that, but it ended up, we ended up working it out because of the COVID situation. Does that, does that sound, does that ring a bell?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So if there's no further from the supervisors, I'm going to open up the public comment, but I just want to urge that we don't need to rehash everything that we've rehashed this morning. If you have anything more to add to this discussion that we're having right now, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If you could state your name, and then you have three minutes.
Sorry about that, Madam Chair. I was just trying to sound relevant.
No, it's all good.
Hi there. My name is Tony Lampert, and I want to say to all you guys, thank you very much for working so hard on all this. I, honest to God, I, I've grown up here my whole entire life. I'm gonna, I've been in Sonoma County working for the last 30 years of a business that I have down there. I'm coming back here for the rest of my life next year, and it's a chance for Lake County to be like it used to be, you guys. There's a chance to maybe make it a beautiful spot in the world again, some kind of economy up here. And that's, that's all I want to say is thank you, and we're trying, and I'm just a landlord. That's what I am. Do you know what I mean? But I, I want to say thank to all you guys and EJ, and I've never really met the rest of you guys in person, but that's it. Thank you. Good job.
Any further comment in the boardroom? If we can make sure we have our masks on too, I'd appreciate that.
And next week, if COVID comes back, then we don't have to worry about that tax thing.
Thank you very much, Richard Durham. Yeah, this comes a little late for some people. Last fall, Will Dawson passed away.
That's all right.
Eight days before his taxes are due. And during that whole time, his wife wasn't aware of it, so she had to pay something like $15,000 extra penalty. So maybe while we were discussing this, when it comes back, maybe there should be a provision for, like you said, the fire victims or widows, because it was really super painful for her. So I appreciate you guys considering this, and I, I think it's a great move. Thank you.
Thanks again. Tyler, with all due respect to the, here, the item right now, just to try and prepare for next week's discussion, is there anything that, I know it's not a Q and A, but is there anything that we can do to bring something to you guys to help with the tax situation? Like, meaning, like, we'd really like to work with you guys to fix this, and I don't know if there's something that we can bring, whether it's legislation written or something, but we, we need to promote and protect agriculture. Bruno, I've talked with you about this. Jessica, I've talked with you about this. And if, if we're going to wait to vote, if we're going to wait to put all of the stuff to vote, with all due respect to democracy and voting and all this stuff, if we're not promoting and protecting agriculture, we may lose a lot of business in Lake County. No tourism dollars in the future moving forward runs the gamut of, of issues of, if we don't further promote and protect the agricultural industry while promoting and protecting the health and safety and wellness of all the constituents here. So I'm just asking you, with respect to the Brown Act and all these issues, what can we do to work together? What can we do to, what can we, us in this room, everybody that didn't make it back after lunch, is there something we can bring to you guys that helps? I mean, anything. I know, I know you're working with LCCA. My, my regulatory attorney that I work with is supposedly working with you guys as well, but things, I know that the, the purview of item 7.3 was like very narrow, like we kept talking about, but it needs to be, it needs to be more. We, the tax, the tax, the tax throughout the whole state is, it's a house of cards crumbling before our eyes, and I'm just, I'm just really curious, like, how we can help. Is there, is there something that we can bring to you guys?
I think Carol maybe wants to speak on that.
I did. So there, there was a lot of talk earlier about having a, continuing the discussion next week, but what, what you're presently considering is something that postpones until May 15th. So if you act on that, then we have a little space to prepare for that discussion properly. What staff could bring back next week would not cover the gamut of possibilities for you. It would be limited. And so if you want to have the full body discussion, I, I think we should clarify the expectation for when that would happen, because in my view, the soonest would be May 8th, excuse me, February 8th. Sorry about that. February 8th. Sorry.
February 8th is when we're having our CDD committee update as well.
Indeed, I think it is, yes. Let me look at February 8th here and see what else we have that day. Sorry about that.
Which is going to be.
So here's what I think is coming back for February 8th, if you want to look at that as a possible date. You have the Sabaloni matter coming back, I believe?
Yes.
We have an investment report. We have a COVID update, if the chair wishes one, and I believe we have the CDD committee report. Or is that the following week? Actually, I have that on the following week.
Oh, is it the following?
Except, yeah. And, yeah. And Supervisor Sabatier, I also misspoke. The way February falls, the, the meeting that the board skips is the 22nd. So the board meets the first, 8th, 15th, skips the 22nd, reconvenes March 1st.
And if I may respond to your question, I'm, I'm hopeful that while we provided some guidance for staff to be prepared, that the conversation as written on the agenda allows for a very generic tax conversation about cannabis being taxed, so that it doesn't limit the type of conversation we can have. But I would suggest participate, be here, lend your voice, and possibly work with all your fellow peers and have some unified voice. It doesn't mean we're going to go exactly in the direction that your voice is giving, but at least we can hear you loud and clear that this is what the industry is saying. And I think that's what LCCA has done time and time again, but that, that's my best that I can provide, is participate, be here, be present.
I appreciate that. I just, I, I think the industry wants to give you guys, the county, something, like you said earlier, Bruno, every, you got, the county has an ask and the industry has an ask, and it'd be nice to formulate a plan so we can act on the plan efficiently. And instead of having a discussion and then going back and having more discussion, I love having discussions, and I'm, I'm trying to become involved. I just, I just really, we need, we need, we were talking at lunch, we need to be efficient, because like, for example, today was, was a great step forward with, you know, postponing this, this tax, but, but we still have so many more issues, tax issues and very, a lot of issues, but we have so much more to work on for the taxes to say, to promote and protect agricultural industry and make sure that these cannabis businesses don't leave. I mean, everybody in this room at lunch was talking about leaving this county. I mean, everybody, every speaker today was talking about leaving this county. I mean, it's, it's kind of serious, and I think that if there's not an efficient means of fixing the problem, again, getting the county what the county needs, and getting the industry what the industry needs, and working together, I, I, I just, I don't, the time, I mean, again, timelines and Brown Acts and all these things that we got to.
And we've, we've gone way past the three minutes.
We're way past the three minutes.
I know.
And way past the item.
Yeah, this item is about.
Sorry, my apologies. Thank you.
The suspension.
Okay, and Supervisor Simon?
I won't extend it on it, so let's just go.
Okay. So if there's no further comments from the boardroom, I'm going to go to Zoom, and we're going to start with Nara.
Hi there, Supervisors. Just wanted to say thank you for hearing us today. Look forward to working together to craft a sustainable and equitable industry where we're all really proud of each other and the work that we're doing. So appreciate your work.
And then we'll go to Sam. Yes, we hear you.
Okay, great. I just wanted to really reiterate the last speaker's sentiment, and I think that, you know, living in Sonoma County and seeing the impact that it's made here, we have clients across California, I see Lake County as, as, you know, really embracing and working with the industry to forge ahead, and in terms of, you know, sustainable practices, so many different things that can be, that can be focused on and implemented across the board between industry and policymakers alike, you know, being in a state like California, we really have an opportunity to lift each other up and highlight the, the potentials for progress here, and I just really appreciate everyone's openness here on this board and the willingness to compromise and communicate with the industry. If I've seen anything in Sonoma County, it's been a significant lack thereof, and it's really been a detriment to the entire industry in Sonoma County. So I really just commend those efforts and emphasize, again, that it really does take cooperation and collaboration with the industry. It sounds like LCCA is doing amazing stuff to bridge that gap between the stakeholders and policymakers, so I just wanted to reiterate that. That's, that's really it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Patty.
Hello. I just wanted to, you know, just come forward and thank, thank the board for, for making all of these concessions and for hearing us today and making real tangible changes that we can see and feel as we, as we press forward with this conversation, and also just to echo what Tyler was saying about the continuing conversation to use the, the, to use the, the influence that Lake County has, because we have been so open to cannabis as an industry. We have real power in, in, in making all of cannabis throughout the whole state heard by our governor and by our state, and I hope that we can, we can take what we, what we, what we know about what's happening with cannabis and the operators and, and at the county and local levels to boost our economy with this industry to the, to the state conversation and, and have that influence. And I just want to thank you guys so much.
I beat up so much.
Okay, we'll move to Julia.
I beat up so much on.
I was on.
There's a law, right?
Hi, everybody. Julia Jacobson, thank you again for the time. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for working with us. Thank you for hearing us. Thank you for hearing our employees, and we just really appreciate this time today and for you taking, hopefully, taking this action today. So thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the postponement of cannabis tax payments and incurment of penalties until no later than May 15th, with a follow-up discussion coming to our board to discuss cannabis taxes at, in a more general sense.
Second.
Hope that was.
I got it.
Can't see her eyes when I'm not looking.
Is there anything you want to change in that, Anita?
I, I didn't understand the last part about in the general sense.
That it's not just specifically talking about CPI, we're going to be talking about cannabis tax, and, and with some of the stuff we requested that staff come back prepared to discuss.
Okay, that's better. Thank you.
Within the board's.
Within the purview that is.
Purview of the board, because I, I just want to make that clear.
And it's about local, not state. I'm, I'm extending my motion.
Sorry.
Second, as amended.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Johanna, if you could please call roll.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Thank you.